Oh, boy. Okay. All right. Still's not gonna work. Did you give me the wrong microphone?
Hold on, she's switching.
No, sir, I'm very happy with the one I have.
We can't have this going on.
All right. We have the minutes of the April 42 meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as may allow?
Move it.
Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. We have claims and the motion for approval of those.
Move on the claims.
We have a motion in the second.
Second.
Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Human Resources, we have the personnel sessions that will hand out on for signatures.
Aye, move it.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. We also have the initiation for the authorization for hiring.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion, those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the next item is the approval of a tentative agreement with the deputies. That was in our homework. Our attorney didn't feel that we need to be here to make that presentation. We all know what was in it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I move that we ratify the tentative agreement reached with CWA regarding the contract between the county and the deputy sheriffs.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Moving on.
Yeah.
Yes?
It was in your homework.
I'd like to give it to you.
You didn't go until I have your approval, then they can have copies of it.
Right.
That's part of our term.
I'll let you have that. You didn't have that in your homework? Okay, I'll get it off to you.
It was on a need-to-know basis.
Well, we'd like to.
No.
Can you just summarize it in addition to that?
What's that? What's that there?
It's a 2% wage increase for the master and the sergeant classification. It's 0% for class two and class one. And then the metric has changed. For class two, it's from, instead of one to 36 months, they'll move at 24 months. Class one, instead of 95 months, they can move at 60 months. And a senior, it goes from 179 to 120 months. And for a master, it goes from 180 down to 121. It's easier to understand if you've got a copy of it, which we'll make sure you get. Is Karen getting?
She's gonna go. Sheriff said so.
All right. Item five, we have the ordering of the Starcom multi-service platform system. And you have, Gary, you gonna talk to us about that?
Yes. Went inside about another event this morning. Do you remember back on April 8th, we received three bids for the multi-service platform? What this equipment does is it connects our tower sites together over the airwaves. It's a microwave system. The interconnecting of the towers is critical in order to keep the radio system in simulcast where it works. To make a long story short, it also is the platform that we use to bring back all the alarms and the videos and the data back and forth on it. We received three bids. Our recommendation today after evaluating the three bids is to award the contract to Calhoun Communications in Sioux City, Iowa, in the amount of $562,499.25. Tony Carpenter, the vice president of Calhoun Communications, is here. If anybody has any questions.
How much is that figure again?
This will be funded jointly with the 911 Services Board. The 911 Services Board is picking up the county, Librae Counties, the city of Sioux Cities, and Sergeant Bluff's share of this project. Because this, also, part of this will be billed out to Dakota County, Union County, and the city of North Sioux. They'll pay a percentage of this because it's a system that benefits all of the.
Right. It's in my interest since we implemented it.
We brought Starcom online in late 2005, fully implemented it in early 2006. And it's that, and what we're doing now is we're beginning to refresh that system. This equipment is like any electronic piece of equipment. It times out. Service is no longer available on it. And it's just a matter of keeping the system refreshed and keep it available to the users. If we don't do things like this, and the system fails, we won't be able to get parts or service on some of the current equipment that's out there, so.
And it's being ordered to Calhoun, you say?
Calhoun Communications and Tony Carpenter, the vice president. Vice president, right? I'd move on it.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Homeland Security, Michelle.
Good morning. Good morning. Today I have a request to transfer six items of investigative equipment to six separate agencies. These were all purchased under our separate Homeland Security grant funds per the requests of the agencies who needed them. At this time, the service is up for renewal, and with our grant funding being cut, we can no longer service the unit. So these agencies have agreed to take on ownership with your permission and to take on the service charges involved.
Move it. Second.
There is a second. Any discussion? These are all items that we no longer, you will no longer, we transferred over.
Pardon me?
These are all items that you will no longer, we transferred over.
Correct. These have always been housed at these agencies, so they're in an agreement to use them within lean region one, which is 16 counties here in northwest Iowa. And they're still under that understanding.
Okay. Any discussion? There is a motion in the second. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move on the sheriff's third quarter report.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. The item B is the approval of 2080 agreement with OTO of Iowa. Sheriff, you wanna talk to us about that?
Another one of the communities that signed the 2080, OTO has been satisfied with the services that we're providing. And they had some issues in Mark Nahr's group that was helpful in getting some, oh, I think it was junk property around the area that was kinda blocking an intersection. So the good news about the 2080 is that the cooperation level that we've been getting out in front of things. And so I think the communities are very satisfied with how it's been run. And so I was glad to see them sign on. And I think maybe at the beginning, there was hesitation. They were concerned about large amounts of billing. But at this time, we haven't had any billings because we've been able to keep out in front of those things without any billing cycles, so.
How many towns does this make?
Oh, I don't know. We only, eight? Eight of them. I think we just have a few left. Sergeant Bluff's gonna enter into one just as a agreement because of CF, that for out of the area, they can come down and respond. Obviously, there wouldn't be any billing there, but we assist one another. And I've talked with Chief Young, and some of that also we'll be working on together, so. It's working really well.
Is there any income from the other?
No, because what we've been able to do is we show up at the town council meetings, and we're working on the city ordinances. And so we're able to get out in front of it if they have something that's occurred simply by our presence, showing up and dealing with it versus the mayor or the clerk. I think that's, that gave it a little more teeth when we knocked on the door and said, these are ordinances and these are the concerns. And so I think that's the part that the communities are very excited about. They all realize so. Anytime there would be a summons or citation issued, then the clock would start running because your city attorney for those communities would start to bill, and then the deputies that would have to go to court thing. But the good news is that we've been able to control those things without that happening. Yeah.
Well, this is the same agreement you've done at the other town.
Right.
Okay, in my mind, I thought you had moved to the next level.
Nope.
But, okay.
Move it.
Second.
Any further discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, same sign. We have the, our architects, are they? Regina, just in time.
I wasn't late again. Okay, all right.
We need to talk about the substantial completion, all the recent security upgrade. Are you in here?
Yes, and I simply need from you an approval to go forward with substantial completion and a signature. At this time, the project is substantially complete. There's approximately less than $5,000 worth of work left to complete the project.
You have, on this, it's $5,000, but I have like $46,000 worth.
Yeah, that's, that's probably true. It's an estimate. Yep.
And are there any other concerns, questions for Larry?
Sheriff, what do you have?
Well, from what our understanding is, that there's a considerable amount of money left for us to get some server space, and we're waiting to find out how much that server space will cost for us, and then add the cameras. Is that the understanding that Regina had? I think that was around, do you have a number of how much that was?
I do not have that number, but what I do have is from HDR, they are working on coordinating information for the capacity that the county is interested in achieving. And so I'm waiting for HDR to give me some information so that I can pass that out to qualified contractors for pricing.
Are you talking about the storage?
Yep.
Video storage?
Video storage and additional cameras. So that is separate from what you're seeing today. What I'm coming before you today is the substantial completion on the work that's currently being worked on the jail now.
It was my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, that the storage capacity was more important than the cameras.
Right. But I think we're going to be able to have enough of the money left to then buy cameras, all within that range.
I think it's gonna be awful tight. Denny, where are we at?
The range I heard from Regina was between X number and X number, which would be all of the cameras. But I think what's gonna happen is that they'll clear out the storage spaces, then they're gonna trim the cameras down after they get the initial bid, trim it down to what fits in within our budget.
Right. That's exactly how it is.
Yeah, and that's correct, according to how I understand it as well.
But it's.
I guess the process, when do they go to the cameras that's been sitting there for two or three months? Nothing's, we're just sitting there and not doing it. We do have time frames, it needs to get done.
And the work is going on behind the scenes, which you're not seeing right now. But HDR is in the process of working on it and trying to provide a documentation that we can give to contractors for prices.
So we will have figures on the storage soon?
I would hope so. That is our goal, as soon as possible. So it's on the list of things to do and is going forward.
That storage is critical.
Absolutely.
My concern is there's not gonna be a lot left.
Yeah, whatever's left, yeah, whatever's left, we're obviously, if I understand, we have to use the money. Correct? So that's where it goes.
Are there a number of vendors out there that we bid on when it comes to that storage situation?
I don't know that I can answer that question. HDR would be the appropriate person to answer that, and so I can pass that question on to HDR and get a response for you.
There was a lot of discussion about if you switch vendors, we may lose some warranty.
And one of the things that HDR has stated is that the contractor for the cameras would have to work with the current contractors to maintain the warranty.
Yep. So there wouldn't be any loss of service or warranty on it?
That's the intention of the design documents, that there will not be a loss of warranty, that the new contractor will work in harmony with the existing contractor's warranty.
Regina, would you suspect that you'll have that back from these people? So they will know?
Well, I was told last week, and because of needing more research done on the capacity and of the recording, that's been delayed. So as soon as that answer is received from Bosch regarding their equipment and how we can manipulate it, then we can proceed forward. And from my end, once I get that information from HDR, then I would need to show it to the sheriff's staff to verify that it's in harmony with needs. And then once I go through that process, then I would be able to duplicate the information and share it with contractors. And that sometimes can take three, up to three weeks. And then it takes time for them to look at the information and give us a price. So we might be, I don't know, this is a guess, about six months, or six weeks out.
Six weeks out. So it's really incumbent upon, you know, the company to get that information back to us as a direct?
Yes, and we always give them a deadline. And of course, we have to be reasonable. If there are extenuating circumstances that we can't control, we extend the deadlines. But we do have deadlines in place.
Well, I think it would be really easy to keep it informed, because it's just like somebody's out there dragging a fee on it.
Well, we certainly hope you don't feel that way. We're trying to move forward under the circumstances we're in.
You want to get that, all that stuff into the jail as quickly as possible?
I agree.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quickly as possible.
I'd move, I'll move on this.
One second.
I do have a correction on the document. Where it says project, alterations in security upgrades, and then it says phase one. Phase one should be removed from that.
I disagree with that. It is phase one because there's more work to be done over there, and it may never get done, but it's still phase one. And the architects developed this in several phases, so.
But.
From the understanding of the architect, this is phase one.
But not from this board, because there's X number of dollars. And when this is spent, that's the end of the project.
Phase one.
Can you go to phase two and three without?
No, you can't go to phase two and three.
Correct.
It's my understanding that the auditors are not liking this. I don't know. I mean, phase one, two, and.
I do have a question, a legal question. These are legal documents, and the legal contract has the term phase one in it. And so that's why we consistently carry that terminology through all the contract documents because of the initial contracts.
Right, but it's been, it's caused some concern in the work that's been going on, that there is going to be continuance. It's gonna be phase one, phase two, phase three. And that's not the case. This is phase, this is the phase.
Right, and it has a certain budget.
There are not going to be other phases going forward.
And once that budget is fulfilled, there will not be any additional work until directed by the board for additional phases. And if that's.
Yeah, I do.
The board really does have to make the decision. We do have to make the decision if there's gonna be another phase, and what those dollars are gonna come from, to, if to go into that second area or the third area or whatever. So I don't think, I think you're worried about commitment of funds.
I'm worried about interpretation, because this could be interpreted as ongoing phases, and there are not ongoing phases. Legally, we cannot have additional phases. Mr. Butler?
And I think they very well understand that it's gonna require a special referendum to go on. And we're talking about a lot on it.
In other words, what you're saying is that, you know, any other phases that we go into is gonna be a lot more expensive than what we've just completed. So that's why we have to maybe think about a referendum by the people of, spending money in jail in the future. Is that what you're saying?
Also, too, no design phases have occurred for the future, so it's a little bit premature to say that future phases would be more expensive, because that design work hasn't occurred yet.
I'd like clarification.
They first came with a plan, there's a phase one, two, three, and four. So there were plans there, so that's not true statement.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
They were not detailed.
They weren't detailed enough. And also, too, design can allow those phases to be broken down further into smaller bits and pieces.
I need clarification from the attorney.
I think how long the documentation has been, phase one, has been in this.
Well, I think calling it phase one is just more descriptive rather than having particular legal significance. I think if there was gonna be additional work done in the future, we have to consider whether the work that's already been done, the amount of work would count towards our cap before we go to a referendum. But calling this phase one doesn't have legal significance as far as finding the board to do something in the future.
Got an understanding on this? Because for I can vote for, you know, I need the sheriff to have an understanding on that.
You guys are the ones that decided you're adding or not, so I.
No, but there was questions from the sheriff's department, that this was gonna be a continuing operation instead of just a one-time shot.
Well, it said phase one, and that there was multiple, you gotta remember, when this thing started, I wasn't the sheriff. And so when I.
But the questions came from your administration, that's why I'm asking.
So then that was only a question. Where, is there phase one, is there phase two? I had no issues. Sure, we have needs up there, but, you know, we make do with what we have, so that's just how we're gonna have to roll.
Okay, as long as that's clear.
Okay. We'll vote on this item, and then I have another question. Do you, Sheriff, on the jail and the inspection from the state?
Right.
We got a time set, George.
I know we do. Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Just a quickie on that, Sheriff. We have rust and stuff around the perimeters of.
Bottom of the shower doors.
Shower doors and that kind of thing. I didn't, I didn't get that report, but I just read it this morning.
Right.
So what we need to do then is have our maintenance department go over, look at that, and see what needs to be done.
Probably have to get new doors. I don't, Todd, I don't know, do you know the expense on what those would be?
Waiting for building maintenance.
Yeah.
Find some suitable.
But I will instruct building maintenance to come over and look at that, see what the extent of it is, and so that they can get us some prices.
Right. You were just on a timetable, so to make sure. Right.
I think this has been fixed twice since I've been around.
Oh, yeah.
So this would be the third time, and maybe we ought to do it right?
Well, those problems are not gonna ever go away.
I, yeah, I think that's the.
It's a maintenance, it's a recurring problem.
Right, it's a recurring problem. I'm not sure that it's just.
You're talking about showers that's probably used, maybe six times a day.
Yeah.
There's just a lot of moisture.
I don't think those problems are ever gonna.
I don't think the cost is that much anywhere on those.
Well, that's what I was trying to try to make, thank you, Sheriff. All right. Let's move on to item, we have time set on the secondary roads, and this is the.
Great bid. Yeah, this is the bid opening for our 255th Street project. This is the RISE-funded project for the road going in to serve the new CF Industries plant. Our first bid is from Lieber Construction of Lauton, Iowa. Oh, I should pass.
You had a bid before, sorry about that.
Sorry.
Other spots on the back, too, if anybody wants to.
Can I help you?
My fingers.
Anybody else need tabs? How many bids do we have, Mark?
We have four bids.
Four bids?
Yes. Again, the first one is from Lieber Construction.
Our estimate was $579,203.
That's correct. Their proposal guarantee is attached, and their bid is $525,413.80. Five-two-five, four-one-three, eighty. Next one is from JV Holland of Decorah, Iowa. Total bid is $572,424.75. Five-seven-two, four-two-four, seventy-five. Next, we have a bid from CJ Moynan Sons of Alcader, Iowa. The total bid is $633,460.20. Six-three-three, four-six-oh, twenty. CJ Moyna, M-O-Y-N-A, CJ are initials for the first name. And Sons, and again, they're from Alcader. And the final bid is from K&amp;L Landscaping of Sergeant Bluff.
K and L?
K, yeah, K and L. And their total bid is $538,978.15. Five-three-eight, nine-seven-eight, fifteen.
Need to look these over?
I would like to, just to make sure there's no errors in the unit pricing.
Move to have the engineers review and bring back a recommendation.
Second.
Those in favor of the motion, or is there any discussion? Those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 That's what's handed.
Butler had his hand up.
Does this contract, how well, is special, when we set up the CFO, or is this within your budget?
This is within our budget and the bond issue. The $800,000 that was set inside for bonding. Correct, yes.
So there is, but yes.
Yeah, this is 80% RISE program funded, 20% local funded, and last year, you folks have decided to bond for yourselves, $800,000 in match money to cover all of the RISE project match. Now, we've been able to match $450,000 of that money on the D-51 project, which is the pavement replacement down on Port Neal Road. That project came in higher than anticipated, so there will be some, you know, we may have to shift some money that way, too. But we've gotten as much match money and than the bonding that will allow us to cover all of the RISE-funded portions of this project. We still have to do the turn lanes on Port Neal Road, and we have the paving of CF roads sometime middle to late next summer. So that'll be the second portion of this project for the planned road.
Anything else? All right, going to item, item B.
Next, we have the bids for Project K-199. Uh, next, we have the, uh, bids for Project K-199. Looks like we have three bidders on the project. Uh, this is the Michigan Avenue Bridge. Uh, this is a, uh, three-span roughly hundred, hundred-and-fifty feet long, just shy of twenty-six feet wide. The, uh, precast panels for this deck had already been purchased by the board. Uh, this is, uh, construction of the substructure, uh, erosion control work, grading, and, uh, placement of those precast sections.
What's the engineer's estimate?
Four-seventeen, one forty-seven.
Should be down here on the- Oh, I haven't passed out the second category. Sorry about that.
Thank you, sir.
All right, our first, uh, bid is from Christiansen Brothers Contractors of Cherokee, Total bid for the project is five hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and fifty cents. Five-one-zero, seven-two-four, fifty. Our next one is from Graves Construction of Spencer, Iowa. Total bid is five hundred and forty-four thousand, four twenty-three, sixty-five. And the final bid is from Dixon Construction of Correctionville. Total bid is six hundred and fourteen thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and eighty cents. Six-fourteen, eight-nine-three, eighty. We need an opportunity to take a look at these. We've heard the era of cheap bridges is over, so, um-
Obviously, these figures.
How low did you refer to the engineer?
Okay.
Second.
Uh, discussion? Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Dennis had asked a question. This bridge is out of our regular five-year program construction funds. This is not one of those special funded bridges. Those, uh, those remain to come forward. Um, next item I have on the agenda is a, uh, permit for RJGP, and this to allow them to replace the drainage structure in Section Two of Liberty Township under 220th Street. It's near the eastern Carroll Avenue intersection. It's a twenty-four inch culvert underneath the road that has failed.
I love it.
Second.
Okay, the second?
Yes, sorry.
Uh, discussion? Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
This is a private drainage structure. It, uh, carries water from the south side of the road to a farmer's drainage ditch lateral, so, um, that's the reason this one is different from one that the county would replace.
Those who favor the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, uh, Mark, do you have any other?
Yeah, here, uh, if you're ready to go on to the next, I had the, uh, copy of the map that the board had requested, um, showing the, uh, land represented by the responses to the, uh, ordinance loophole. Green areas being those areas where the property owners responded affirmatively to proceed with the project. Um, the, uh, red areas being those areas where they responded no. Um, as you can see, the largest one is the one that, uh, really gets no benefit from the, uh, drainage ditch improvement. They're right on top of the outlet anyway. That would be the, the, uh, property that lays just adjacent to Brown's Lake in the southwest quadrant of the, uh, uh, interchange. But, uh, a substantial portion of the land to the north that actually does benefit from the outlet was, uh, among the responses that we received. Now, the prod, the parcel you see in Section Seventeen, which would be on the western porch, or western side of I-29, um, their, uh, affirmative response was conditional upon the fact that we did the three-A option ditch. That's the ditch that runs parallel to the east side of I-29. And that really does benefit quite a few of the properties that are, um, in that interstate twenty-nine area.
So, yeah, it's really, it's really, uh, checkered board time here.
Well, to me, the ones that didn't respond, it's probably gonna be a no anyway then, so we could color those red.
I mean, I know that, but I guess I don't-
Well, if you didn't respond, you-
Free's property.
Yeah.
And, uh, we know that he's interested in selling that as, uh, a wetland.
What section is that located in?
That is that dart. It's-
Be twenty-one.
Okay, so one, number twenty-one?
Yeah.
It's in Section Twenty-One, it's that north half. And, uh-
You got no response from that landlord?
No, he, he did not respond, but, but again, we know he's receptive to, uh, sale of that ground to be improved as an enhanced wetland area.
Well, what's the, uh, pleasure of the board?
It's not an agenda item.
Yeah, you're, you're not in a decision phase at this point in time. I was just trying to provide information to the board today, and then to see if you want me to schedule an agenda item to proceed from here.
I thought we were planning on having a meeting.
That's what I like to do.
Okay. So the next, uh-
That's what I like. Uh, because I think that, you know, the, uh, uh, folks down there and, and surrounding it needs to see this, and that we can talk about it, and, uh, lay out everything, and see where, so that we can make a, a decision whether we're moving forward or not going forward with the, with the, uh-
So our next, you want to reschedule an informal hearing then?
I would like to do that. I, I see some head shaking here.
I would think that would maybe move the process along and give at least some closure on where we're at so far. Seems like it, it's just left hanging if we don't have a meeting.
And the answers that, what we have so far is that New Lake, or Horseshoe Lake, whichever it is, is not available to us as an outlet, which means we're continuing to look south to Brown's Lake.
Since, uh, since when does Mid-American get to pick and choose water going into a lake?
Sure ground.
It's a lake. It doesn't matter where water's coming from, so we could, we could say that Brown's Lake doesn't get any water either? We move the drainage ditch? No, I, I had a discussion with a guy on this. It's a lake. How do they, you know, most lakes are owned by the state of Iowa. They're not owned by people.
Well, they created that.
Well, then-
Calling it a lake is a little-
That's what I'm saying. They shouldn't be calling it anything, then.
Well, that's a discussion we can have, and we'll take a chance with, uh, you said that.
I just, I just find it funny that people can think-
If it gets set, some sort of meeting, uh, this month down there, and they can, uh, you know, within the next couple of weeks, uh-
You need some time to get out there.
Well, we need about, I, I'd allow at least two weeks for the word to get out. Uh, is there a particular night that the board prefers?
Wednesday, Thursday night for me, or even, uh-
Or even a Tuesday night, maybe?
Tuesday night's probably best.
Tuesday night would be your best night then.
Gotta remember though, they're gonna be planting, they're gonna be planting.
Yeah.
Make anything work.
Twenty of the May is, is on, is on, on Tuesday.
May twenty?
May twenty.
Um, one of the things that, uh, Dave mentioned is that, you know, farmers are planting right now. Would it be better if we pushed into that first week of June?
Yeah.
That should, that should get most of the crop in.
You gotta understand, right now, it's been raining so much, they can't do anything, so.
So you're looking at the third of June?
Oh, we're not doing the third of June. That's the primary.
That's the primary.
We could.
Yeah, we could, but-
It don't matter to me.
It's gonna be a busy day for them.
Or George.
Wednesday night, the fourth, you could-
Fourth at work.
The fourth at work.
All right, let's do that then.
I just think it would be a good idea to probably get off of the period when they're likely to be planting.
Right.
At this rate, they might still be planting.
What's that?
At this rate, it might, they might still be planting.
We, we hope not.
What time are we talking about?
Say six o'clock. Can we make arrangements for, uh, Salem?
That would be, you know, I will contact Barb, and she's, she's got it available that night.
That would be, uh, that would be good, to do that.
That's what we will, uh, strive to do.
And how much more information are we going to have?
Well, we're gonna get information that, I mean, this map is important, um, but I think that maybe we need to review, uh, whatever options that we started out having, and, um, and, and, and go from there. I know that, didn't we, didn't we, uh, look at applying for some grant funds for one, uh, portion of the project?
We applied for a, uh, watershed improvement review board grant that, uh, we did not receive grant.
We did not receive the grant, so that's-
We were not, uh, one of the selected, uh, projects.
Okay.
The, uh, one point one million, I think it was, and that was enough to fund three projects that were selected. There were, it was between twelve and sixteen in all that applied for money. Um, yeah, that, that's one of the things we now know. Um, again, uh, I, I know this was, Mid-American is not the natural outlet for this area, and they have said that, um, they would not go along with a ditch being cut to take the water there.
To take the water, and they all, yeah.
We're looking at projects that range between four hundred and thirty thousand, just for the basic ditch to replace the current twenty-inch tile. Um, up to seven hundred and sixty thousand, was it? For the, uh, underground system. And all of those outletting towards Brown Lake.
And number seventeen, uh, here. That is conditional upon open ditch on the west?
That's correct. They want to see that, uh-
On the west or the east side of the interstate?
East side of the interstate's what's been, uh, that was what was listed as three-A in the options reviewed and presented by your drainage engineer. And basically, that's a ditch that runs parallel, picks up the, uh, flow that comes from the west side through culverts underneath the interstate, uh, flows down the east ditch along I-29, and then crosses near, uh, where the, uh, access to the, um, airport beacon is.
Okay.
Um, you know, right now, that is, uh, kind of a privately maintained swale is what's there right now. That was felt to be important for those folks.
And then it would run?
It would run to the, it would run parallel to the interstate, uh, down to where the either ditch going across the interstate, carrying all the water, or to an intake for a tile system if the underground conduit was selected.
And that was the expensive, uh-
The underground was the most expensive option. The sixty-inch cor, or the sixty-inch concrete pipe was the most expensive. That would have a new intake structure, and, uh, would be a larger structure to bore underneath all the roads. The, the least costly option with three-A, I think it came in in the neighborhood of five hundred and seventy thousand, if I remember correctly, uh, for the open ditch sections.
Okay.
And again, those are very preliminary estimates, once quantities and, uh, and, uh, channel slopes, and you get ditch depth, so they know the exact excavation that's going to be done. They should be able to firm up that, uh, estimate.
Okay.
And those are very preliminary estimates.
No, that's kind of estimation I think we can provide, and then, uh, we'll move on from there.
Does the, uh, you want our drainage engineer there, I'm assuming?
Well, I would, yeah, because that, you know, specific questions might come up, you know, or-
I, I guess I'd like to put on the table the option of, uh, draining everything on the east side of seventy-five, because that's where most of the yeses are. Well, not the entire east side, it'd be from the beginning of the slough at twenty-nine, and then it runs around under the rail i-in that wetland. You could take it over to the guy that is willing to, uh, uh, make his ground into a wetland. I think there's enough storage there, it wouldn't even go on, you know, you could do it so it wouldn't even go toward Brown Lake.
But in, in that instance-
Remind you once again, this is not on the agenda.
But, uh, I'd like to see that option on the table to discuss when we have this meeting.
We just talked about what we want to see on the agenda at the meeting.
I'll, uh, I'll pose that question to the consultant.
Okay. Well, do you have a-
That question that Mark's asking, uh, does that mean that there'd be no work done, just the purchase of that ground for a settlement bond?
Uh, well, I wonder who owns that area just west of the rail? That's trees.
That is, uh-
Add that name.
Nelsons or Yocums?
Well, can, well, let's, let's have that.
Yeah. Yeah, I can, I can get that, I was-
When we, uh, when we have the-
It's Randy Beck.
Yeah, it's two orders, actually.
Mark, if you can get things set up for, uh, what is it, the twenty for the, uh, in June, uh, third, fourth, whatever day that is, then you can-
Yeah, we'll contact, uh, Barb today and see. Uh, I think that, some of that ground's Randy Beck's, doesn't it?
Okay.
Could be.
Well, let's, let's do that, and we'll have all that information available. Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks, thank you. Right, hearing, and we didn't, any individual wish to make a presentation on it, I have not on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Salem, you spoke to the earlier-
Morning, I'm, uh, Dick Salem, and I'm a member of the Noon Surtoma Club, and, um, you may have, uh, heard or read in the paper, uh, well, anyway, Surtoma's main emphasis is hearing health, and, uh, the primary thing that we've been doing is, uh, giving, uh, hearing aids to, uh, children of disadvantaged, uh, families, and, uh, we just did that recently at our, uh, from the, uh, Surtoma Sports Banquet. The, uh, another initiative that we just started, um, is, uh, and I'm spearheading that, and probably because it's near and dear to my, to my ears, uh, I wear hearing aids, and that's the looping. Uh, if you're not familiar with it, if you read that middle section in that sheet, it, that's a real simple explanation. Um, it, it's simple terms, an induction loop works by being attached to an amplified system. It has a wire loop that goes around an area, sometimes on the floor or in the ceiling, and when the amplified system is turned on, the individual with a hearing device, like me, turns on their telecoil, and the sound goes directly into my hearing aids. Uh, I can tell you right now that I did not understand one word that when Mark and the other people were at this microphone, I heard the words, but I did not understand them. And that's the problem, uh, with, with people with hearing aids, especially as you get older, the understanding becomes a problem. So you don't go to council meetings, you don't go to supervisors' meetings, you don't go to the chamber, you know, uh, yearly, uh, banquet and so forth, uh, and, and show, and movies and so forth, because you hear, but you don't understand. And that's, it's a real problem, um, and, uh, and we're just really excited. Uh, we have partnered initially with the city, uh, the looping system has been installed in the city council chambers, um, a week ago tomorrow, and- ago tomorrow, and tomorrow noon, uh, tomorrow at eleven o'clock, uh, I'm going to be the guinea pig, we're going to test it out and see if it works. Um, what we wanted to do is to partner with the city and the county to see if you would be interested in installing a looping, or at least investigating a looping system in this room. And what they would do is they would put a, a copper wire either in this, around the ceiling or on the floor, and there'd be a system that would tie into your microphones, and as soon as I walk into the room, I could flip, uh, actually, I have a remote, so I could just put it on sta, on setting four, which my audiologist did yesterday. He set that to T coil. So, any hearing aid that has a T coil, you can flip the T, turn the T coil on, and when you talk, the sound goes directly into your hearing aid, so there's no distance. I, I even, you even have trouble, you know, hearing, uh, you know, even in somebody this close, Jackie, or, or David, Mark. Anyway, so, uh, we're really excited about this. We would like the supervisors, uh, and by the way, we partner, when I say partner, we would pay up to at least half of the installation. Um, and then the, the city is paying the other half in that case, and then we would ask you now. That, the city, um, cost was, uh, uh, don't get too scared, seventy-two hundred dollars, but, uh, the reason for that was, is that the city has a lot of, uh, some, uh, steel in the floor, so there had to be some additional engineering and additional cost, otherwise it'd been about si, five thousand dollars or less. This room here would probably be a thousand dollars or less. So, I'm guessing, hopefully, it'd be around the seven hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. So, the Sertoma Clubs would pay half of whatever that would be. Uh, I, the lady that, um, actually, the engineers that installed it at the city is coming tomorrow, as I mentioned. I was gonna, if you're, with your permission, I would like to have them just come and look at this room and then give us an estimate of what it might cost. So, I hope I'm not way out of line on, on the, the thousand dollars or less. So, the cost to the county would be somewhere around five hundred dollars or less to install the looping system here. Uh, do you have any questions?
Do you have to have a special hearing aid to tie into that, or can, and do most people have that type of hearing aid?
If you, no, if you have a fairly newer hearing aid, about eighty, ninety percent of all the hearing aids within the last couple of years have telecoils, but like, for instance, mine, it just wasn't turned on, they call it. And so, I went in to my audiologist, he went on the computer, he says, okay, setting four is your telecoil. So, when I would come into this room here, I would just turn my hearing aid to setting four, and that, and the telecoil would be activated, and it would come into my hearing aids. So, uh, if you, the person would need to go to their audiologist and find out whether they have a telecoil, for one thing. This is, this is an old, uh, application. The, in Europe, it's all over. I mean, they even have it in ticket booths, in the theaters, uh, in thea, in theaters, and, and just about every public, uh, entity in Europe has, uh, has loop, uh, the looping system. It's, it's not, hasn't been really, um, um, popular yet, but it's just, it's starting to come, and may, and part of it is the Sertoma emphasis on it is starting to really generate. So, uh, uh, the, uh, the company that installed the one at the city has, uh, the reason why we just chose them to do the first ones, hopefully, we can find a Sioux City company that would do it, uh, and then that, from then on, we would use them. But, uh, they have installed this looping system in several other places around Iowa, north, uh, western Iowa for other Sertoma Clubs, uh, in churches, uh, theaters, uh, not, not tremendous amount, but probably, uh, at least a dozen or more. So, it, it's, it's, it's coming, and, uh, it's just a real blessing for people that have hearing aids, uh, to, to, to be able to, to experience that.
Well, I think it's a great idea, and I want to thank you for bringing this to us, because anything we can do to, um, increase accessibility is, is good, and, and it takes people sometimes to jog us a little bit.
So, rather than sit there and play with your iPhone, we can actually hear what's going on.
That's good.
So, um, you're gonna invite that person over to take a look at our...
Yeah, uh, they're gonna test the, uh, the one at the city from eleven to eleven thirty, and then I thought I would bring her over here, if that's okay, uh, around...
Great idea.
Right after that, to just to look at it, to, she could probably look at it and just say, you know, it's going to cost X number of dollars to, to do that, or we can't do it, or something, for whatever it is. So, I'm not asking you to commit to anything right now, other than just to give us, give us permission to go ahead with, to, to investigate it.
I don't have a problem with that.
I think you have a consensus, let's go ahead and do it, uh, look at it, Dave. I think it's an excellent idea.
Yeah.
So, let's go ahead and look at this and see if we can get it done. Uh, this is a Miss Howard here, and if we put that looping system in, it'll probably have a bug, we don't have to tear up any floors or tear out walls or anything.
Well, George, it's, it's not so bad for when you guy, when, when the supervisors talk, because I can, I can swatch your lips and hear at the same time, so it's, we can pick that up. But when somebody is facing away from us, like, for instance, the speakers that all came up here, you don't, you don't under, you, you hear, but you don't understand.
Absolutely. That's a good idea. Glad you brought it to...
Good idea, Dick.
All right, thank you very much.
Seems to me the expedient way to do this would be if it's a thousand dollars, have Dick get it to you, and we'll put it on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We just, we just have to be careful of where we're putting it.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Yes, sir, please give your name.
My name is Dale Patton. I live at twenty-two ninety-four Allison Avenue, southern Bluff, Iowa.
Next to the old hole.
Next to the what?
Oh, there was a huge hole in the road right in front of his house.
And that is one of the reasons I'm here, Mark, uh, is I want to bring this to your attention, uh, that two houses, one on twenty, two twenty-fifth and one on Allison Avenue, is seeing structural damage. And they're not here, whatever they're going to do about it, I personally haven't seen it. I'm not an engineer, don't pretend to be an engineer. I want you to know that if structural damage is happening in my house, I'm going to get an engineer and an attorney. The road out there is starting to be fixed, but it's a long ways from there. And, uh, as you know, we have, uh, uh, trucks, and these trucks are on the roads, and the roads are in bad shape, and they get the bouncing. I'm sitting at my kitchen table, listening to the dishes rattle in my cupboard, and, uh, I, it's got to be doing something to my house.
Okay.
Uh, a minute ago, you guys were talking about two thousand fifteen, is that the completion date on that road going into CF, or is that the starting date?
Mark, is that the...
Uh, that's the completion, the paving project is two thousand fifteen. They requested that we wait, uh, until two thousand fifteen, when they were closer to opening the plant, that actually paved the road.
Well, that's a long ways away, and, uh, I personally don't think that what we're doing now, these roads, these county roads are not made for this much traffic, begin with, and I just don't think it's going to hold up. And I hope you, as a board, will, uh, uh, look into this in case we got to do this thing over and over. I don't, I don't know. I don't know the answer.
Don't we have a plan?
For, we're, we're currently working on Allison. We started down at Plant Entrance, we're coming back north. We'll be chemically treating it here shortly. Uh, we're adding an additional, uh, um, two inches of gravel to the whole road. Um, we'll be treating it with, uh, chloride, as we've done in the past years. We haven't, uh, we, we've looked at a couple of products to increase the stability of the road. We've looked at fly ash for stabilization. Uh, we've looked at construction of a caton-style base, which would be, of course, aggregate, uh, material. I'm trying to get some information on a product that's called Phase One. Uh, we were going to try it on our dust control roads over at Blount Island this year. I want to see how well it would work on, on this road as well. Uh, it works similar to fly ash, where you're actually mixing it into the surface to create a better, more stable road surface. I haven't got any costs on it yet, though. Um, one of the problems with a caton-based road is we'd have to take the haul roads out of service for roughly a week, uh, for two thirty-fifth, and roughly a week for Allison. We really don't have the ability to do that with the amount of traffic that's using those roads right now. Uh, that's pretty well knock that option out. The other issue with fly ash is we couldn't get all the way up to the edges of the road with it, and that's the areas that, you know, right, like, right in front of us, how it showed the initial instability of, as you're thawing, it's those outside edges that have the sun and, you know, the environment above them that thaw out first while the center's still frozen and solid. Um, Phase One does offer us some, uh, some different options, but I want to finish looking at this product, see if it would be the most suitable for use out there. Um, all these are designed to improve the stability of the road. I, I need to create a report for the board as well, because, uh, CF had made one other suggestion, request for an alternative haul road. Um, but I kind of had a chance to put any figures together for the board to, uh, consider on that, that issue just came up. Well, I guess they broached it, uh, talking about extending two hundred and forty over to Andrew, and then going on, avoiding most of the houses, though. Uh, but we haven't had a chance to develop any costs for that.
Well, we do have a plan, as you said, and, uh, because you and I, and also Mr. Butler met with, uh, with the, uh, uh, director down there, just a few weeks ago, we went over those options that, uh, Mr. Derek just, just reviewed. So, we, I totally understand and sympathize with the effort, because, uh, there's a lot of truck traffic, there's going to be more, and, uh, we've got to do something more than what we're doing probably, to stabilize those roads, make them smoother, uh, and even to whiten them if we can, so that we can eliminate or minimize the, uh, danger of things going off the road and that kind of thing. So, we are aware of it, and we're going to stay on top of this thing, so we just, uh, I wish we had two or three remarks, so that we can get, you know, more of the, of the work done, because that's a huge project.
Are we, we're, we're going to have some turnouts?
The pullouts are, uh, constructed. We have one that still needs some gravel servicing, we'll be catching it as we come north. Uh, we have gravel down from, um, the first resident north of the, uh, north of the Plant Entrance. Uh, we've got the gravel in place. Uh, yesterday with rain, we weren't able to, uh, shoot with fluoride. Um, we should be able to finish from there up to the intersection at two thirty-fifth. We were going to try it today, we should be able to get in there tomorrow and do that one. Um, then we'll apply the dust treatment for there, and then we'll continue to move north of Allison. Our, our plan is, we should be to Allison and two twenty-fifth, and be finished with those roads on Friday, and then we'll work on two thirty-fifth next week. We want to get a front of the houses done first. Um, the pullouts, uh, we've been running the vibratory roller, we rented over there to try to improve their stability. Last week, we had one get stuck, and it was in one that didn't have any rock or gravel, so, uh, we pulled up into it before it was completed. Um, the others are doing fairly well under the truck traffic, but they're new grades, and they're seeing their first rain now, so they're not as firm as the rest of the road with that.
The importance of those pullouts, I call them, is that you don't have two trucks clear over on the edge of the road, passing each other, because I've been out there when that happened, and that's breaking down the outside edge of the road. And if that starts moving, then the whole road starts moving, so a lot of thought put into all this, uh, but it ain't going to get better for traffic.
It's not going to get better for that, there's going to be more out there, and that's why, uh, we, that is a priority for us.
Well, I want to thank you, but, but, uh, we definitely have some problems out here, and do you agree with me that roads are bad shape?
Yes, it's in very tough shape right now. It should be better by the end of the week.
How come you let it get so bad before you did anything?
One of the problems that we had was, uh, we were going out spilling almost daily of trying to pull those edges in and keep those edges as smooth as we could, but when the frost was going out, we had a, we had a problem of being able to do anything that was going to substitute for firm. As fast as we would get the road to reshape, uh, we added up gravel, we almost took care of our crown problem on those outside edges, but that subgrade continues to move on us. Um, that's one of the areas where we're looking at something that we can inject into that base to help create additional strength to the truck track. Uh, fly ash is one project, product that do that, but the reasons we discussed, it isn't the best option here, so we're trying to find another material that would help us with that. Um, it's like you said, these roads weren't designed for three to four hundred trucks a day going in and out, and, uh, we're trying to make the best of a difficult situation out there.
We have so many variables that we have to, we have to deal with, and it's, as you say, I mean, we, we never would have realized a few years ago that we could have a one point seven billion dollar expansion going on down there. That's, that's a good thing, it's a real good thing, but it also can be a bad thing relative to the amount of traffic, particularly the heavy traffic, truck traffic that's going to be generated down there within the next, uh, two and a half, three years. So, uh, it is incumbent upon us to, uh, develop a plan through our engineering department that will take care of that, of that, those rolling situations, and, uh, we're going to do the best we can to do that, sir, we really are. I can understand the vibrations and the, the inconvenience it's causing you and the other residents down there. Uh, but it takes money, they have one more than we have. I wish we could take the loan up from them, uh, that we could probably do more.
Have you, uh, money project here, uh, have you considered, um, asking the state for a little help on the money part? Asking, uh, Governor Branson for any kind of assistance?
It wouldn't bother me at all, I could, I could do that, and, uh...
We actually have.
Yeah.
We have a RISE grant for one point...
Three point three million for the, the Baptists for the construction of the permanent roads and payments that are going out. That did not include any haul roads.
No.
It wasn't conceived we'd be using those roads at the time we applied for the RISE grant.
But you're right, I think that we can, you know, request it, all they can do to us is to say no, uh, and, uh, because we're under an unusual circumstance here because of that huge development down there, uh, which I, I want for this county, uh, but it's, it's putting, you know, us under a particularly, uh, particular strain, and, uh, so we've got to utilize every, uh, resource that we have. But we're paying attention to it, uh, we're going to do the best we can down there, that's all I can say to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Board members, anything else?
Oh.
I'm sure you have any adjournments.
Motion.